Township Commission meeting on October 26, 2023. I will call the roll. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. LaBelle.
Here.
Mr. Demink.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Renaud is excused. Mr. Jaworski.
Here.
Mr. Klonowski.
Here.
Mr. Carr is running late. Mr. Brokhardt.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. LaBelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have one review tonight. Morelli Investments Site Plan Number 2023-06. Modifications in the M2, 10 acres north of 23 Mile, west of Grashit. Parcel ID 150917-326012. Address is 51705 Grashit. Mr. Palin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting was requested by the applicant. Some issues came to our attention during construction. So, we're here in front of you tonight to try to resolve that. There's a couple of things. The one, I have some slides up here for you to kind of go through them and explain it. Just so you're aware, any of the red markings you see are my markings to make it more obvious what I'm talking about. But, so this, this one here is a minor change that was being requested. You can see there's two drives on there accessing the parking lot, coming in off of Grashit. I guess the applicant probably can probably speak more to it as well. But, there was a, I believe, a grade issue coming off of Grashit into the site. So, they're proposing to eliminate it down to one. The fire department has reviewed it. They have no objections with it. I don't have any objections to it. I just wanted to make the commission aware of that one. The one that's a little more substantial is the, the building elevations. Two issues here. This came to our attention. It was brought up that there's an ordinance requirement for marijuana retailers to have 25% transparent glazing between 2 and 8 feet above grade on the building. So, we were checking the drawings to see if that requirement was met. And it came to our attention that the approved building plans did not match what was approved by the planning commission. So, I'll go over the differences here with you. What's on your screen now is what the planning commission approved previously. So, you can see the, the three basically white areas are the brick. The bottom area is burnished block. And then the area behind where the, where it says sign is a corrugated, corrugated metal. Then what was, what's being constructed and what the applicant is asking for tonight is what's on the screen now. So, the, and there's some stuff that needs some clarification here as well. Because when we look at these elevations here that were sent to us, it does say 3-foot, 4-inch-high brick. I believe what is there and what their intent is, is limestone. And then above that is a aluminum composite panel. And then the taller areas on the ends of the building where it says sign is a nichia fiber cement panel. So, the applicant, I guess, is asking the commission if they find that acceptable and comparable to what's required by the ordinance. And the ordinance language is, "The exterior surface of all buildings except agricultural uses in one-family dwellings fronting upon a street or any portions of a building visible from a street or public waterway shall be face brick or other comparably durable decorative building materials approved by the planning commission." So, that's what you're looking at. Is this a comparably durable decorative building material? And then lastly, I have the rendering. Also, I did get drawings from the applicant showing windows. I do have those. I could put those up on the screen. I didn't have it in this presentation ahead of time, and I didn't have it in the agenda. So, I figured we could let the applicant speak to that tonight. But, I believe what they've indicated, is there some, historically, they've had some issues. Well, I'll let them speak to the issues that they may have with the state of Michigan. But, they are proposing to meet our ordinance requirement with transparent windows. And then also some, I'll call them dummy windows for aesthetic purposes. But, I'll let them speak more on that. So, I can answer any questions. And I believe the applicant is also interested in making a presentation to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Applicant, want to speak?
Good evening, I should say. Robert S. Huth Jr. On behalf of the applicants, with me this evening is Mr. Stavros Toma and Mr. Dave Morelli. I spend more time on that side of the table than over here in front of the microphone. And if I was there, the first question I'd ask myself is, why did the planning commission approve a set of plans and put the expertise into it? And then the applicant brought something else in later that is not what the planning commission approved. And I want to address that is, we made a mistake there. We're moving in with a couple of different projects. And one got, plans from one got presented to you. And later, when we came to the final, we did not realize that the plans that we had submitted for approval and permit were different than what you had looked at. So, there is no ill will there, no ill intent on this part. Mr. Morelli's reputation, I hope you know, he doesn't, doesn't play that way. So, with respect to the specific questions, I will ask Mr. Morelli and Mr. Toma to address those. The only one that has just came, come up, I wanted to meet head-on. And that is, with respect to the windows, there's some administrative rules that are in place with what they call the, the code that was enacted with the recreational marijuana in terms of advertising, having this product available for someone that is under 21 to see. And, and the issue is, Jars, which will be the ultimate tenant here, has been notified, and I do have an email correspondence with them, that the Cannabis Regulatory Authority does not permit cannabis products to be seen from the outside. And it's basically stemming from the rule that owners of this establishment cannot advertise their product if more than 30% of the people likely to see it are under the age of 21. So, it's been interpreted that there shall not be windows there. So, in one recent case, Jars had to circle back to the CRA, send pictures to confirm that it, all the windows will be blacked out, and there would be no window transparent to the community. So, the, the first request and the reason for the request not to have the window is that concern that it will violate the CRA rule in terms of the cannabis being visible to others that are in the parking lot. They're owned by Mr. Morelli, of course, going to have other retail operations. So, I don't know if you want to get these issues one at one, or if there's other questions you'd prefer to ask these gentlemen.
We'll let them do their presentations first.
Okay. Mr. Morelli, is there some, does it make sense for him to talk about the plan that you put up there?
Sure. I can address the site plan issue with the one driveway. That's strictly, we went to engineer the, the project. The, the grade change was so severe there, coming off of Grashit and up, that it wouldn't work to put that first initial driveway, the east one. So, we had to move that one back. When we did that, it got too close to the, the west driveway. So, we had to go with, with one driveway, simply because of grades, the way engineering worked. Any questions on that?
Any questions on that? No.
Speaking regarding the metal panels in the building. In my opinion, the metal panels are actually a, a better, more durable than brick. They come with a lifetime warranty. They're aluminum. With the system there, you have 2-inch foam insulation. You have a zip board that's weather resistant on top of that. And there's, there's tar on the block before that. It's basically a weatherproof system. And it's thermally more efficient. So, it's greener. You lose less energy cost with that system. Brick and mortar cracks. It's porous. Water can get behind them. We have other, other buildings in Clintosh, we have had a lot of problems recently with water getting behind the brick and getting into the buildings. This can't happen with this metal panel system. So, to me, it's, it's a more durable, more expensive system, new way to, way to build a building. And we do have the stone on the bottom that gives you the, the look of, you know, stone also. So, that's, that's my.
Mr. Morelli, I think you brought a product here. What, what was it that you brought with you?
This is the nichia fiber cement. It's extremely heavy. This is what's going around the front door. It's a fiber cement panel with a wood grain look. Extremely heavy stuff. And this also goes, same system, it's after the zip board, 2-inch foam insulation behind it. Very quality building.
And if I, if I could just address one, one more final item. The brand jars that is going to be up here in Chesterfield Township. Mr. Toma says, "Thank you very much." How many of those retail outlets, would you say, are in Michigan now? There are 18, and there is a proprietary look to those buildings. They are running the same with this, I'd call it a heavy-grade aluminum front on it. And again, it's the, the hope of the entity that they can continue to maintain that proprietary look here in Chesterfield Township. Is that correct, Mr. Toma?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did you bring a sample of that with you?
I do have a sample of the aluminum. Do not. I have a picture, I have a picture of the panel if you want to see that.
Do you have any literature on it or anything?
You have anything else to say?
Just to conclude it, this plan meets and exceeds the brick or better ordinance. I know that this commission has allowed for another entity, Title Wave, that was in the area, to, to have a, a front that was different than brick. So, there is precedent for it. It meets your ordinance and asks for your consideration on this special evening night. Thank you for deciding to meet on, on short notice at not a regular time.
Thank you. Mr. Demink, do you have any comments?
Not right now to start. I'm just looking at all this, just looking at these.
Mr. Brokhardt?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Can you summarize for us exactly what you're asking this commission to do tonight? I don't know if there's one, two, or three issues at hand here. I've, I've heard windows. I've heard driveway.
I think, that's a terrific question. I think the best way to summarize the request is, we'd ask the planning commission to approve the same plans that were submitted with the building permit application in what month?
July or August.
July or August. So, the request is approve what the building department has already approved.
You're asking us to approve what's been approved?
Well, no, I'm not. First of all, let me say, I don't, I don't want to make light of the situation. We dropped the ball and didn't give you the plans in May that you should have had. So, in July or August, we didn't realize we submitted with the application plans that were different than what you had seen. When that came to light, we're now kind of going backwards and asking, as if we're in May, for you to approve what the building department has.
So, is it my understanding the difference falls in regard to the windows?
Two things. The windows and the siding that you see. That was, the one drawing that had brick all the way to the top, that's not what's being submitted. The aluminum panels are different.
And then the, the drive in and out, we went from two entrances to one?
Yeah, that was more of an engineering issue, though.
Okay.
Nothing to do really.
So, we don't have to talk about that tonight?
Um, yes.
So, there are three issues?
Three issues then.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to expand on Rich's point a little bit regarding the driveway. Typically, something like that we would do administratively, especially if it's an engineering concern and it doesn't change, you know, the functionality of the site and meets all the ordinances. I just figured it was in the best interest since this was coming here and it was the same time. We might as well just put it all in front of the commission. So, it's all out there. It's all one package. So, that was a decision to bring it here in front of you. But, it is something that's typically minor, and we would usually do that administratively, but.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the siding. We're gonna talk about the windows. You say you guys just dropped the ball. Can you, can you tell me a little bit more? What, what happened? Were you just really busy and you turned in the wrong drawings? Or did you change your mind after they were turned in and, and want to do something differently?
Mr. Brokhardt, what happened was in May, when we were putting the site plan application together, I asked Jars to give me a, part of the package is elevations. They sent me elevations. And back then, I had no idea what they use on their buildings or, you know, any materials. I just put them in the package and we turned them in. I didn't even really look at what was on the building. And then, at that point, we went to submit for the building permit. And we submitted for it the way they supplied the plans, the building plans for me to submit. And I didn't even know that there was a different material and elevation than was on the site plan. I had no idea. And I didn't know any of this until a week or two ago when this whole issue came up that there's metal panels on the building. It was supposed to be brick. So, yeah, that's how, exactly how it happened. If I can, I'd just like to explain how he got the elevation that said brick. We asked our licensing department. They have, they keep, they keep all of our files for the architectural drawings, all that stuff, just to send over the elevations from Mount Clemens. Because that was similar to what we wanted to build in Chesterfield. Mount Clemens has the metal panels and has the limestone at the bottom. She sent me the wrong one. I didn't, I, I didn't double-check it because Mount Clemens is already built and up and running. And I, I just didn't know it said brick on that site plan. It was just, it was just an honest mistake.
So, you and I chatted, I think, yesterday. I took some pictures of your facility on Grosbeck and then went over to the one on Grashit. And these look different than the one on Grosbeck. And I thought they were going to be the same. Are they, are they, is that what it's going to look like?
No. So, on this one, I sent over, I emailed over a new plan earlier. On the, on the left side, that's going to be the nichia. The, I'm sorry, not the nichia. That's where the panels are going to go. The nichia is only going to be above the door. The rest, and, and the side. The rest are the.
So, you're gonna have lime, you have limestone all the way around the bottom right now?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So, that's, that's the major difference.
Yep.
Okay.
There, there it is right there, yep. It's the same exact metal panels that we have at the Grosbeck, at all the locations.
Thank you. I'm all set, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
There it goes. First, regarding the site plan, two entrances versus one entrance, I'm not opposed to either one. I do find it a little odd that I, I haven't been able to quite figure out the elevation issue you're seeing. I mean, I see Lerner did the original site plan. Lerner did the revised site plan. And I know that they're certified surveyors because I, I use them in my own company as a vice, you know, as I had a construction for a company. So, I, I'm still not getting where the elevation issue is. And I'm a little concerned that a licensed engineer signed off on all that in the original one with issues. But, again, I'm okay with that one. I mean, one versus two is no big deal. But, I do have a significant issue with your elevations. I've been down this road many times. I've been on your side many times for years. And at the end of the day, when you come to site plan approval stage, you are supposed to have your things in order for us to review. And that goes regardless of where you're at. I've done this in many, I've done it in multiple states, site plan reviews on your end. And I know every time that I made a commitment at those meetings, I had to follow through with it. Again, I'm not accusing you of doing anything deceivious by no means. But, from my perspective, I am not going to be lenient in regards to what you submitted back in May and what you're submitting now. I think it's a deviation from our ordinances. And at the end of the day, we're here for the, you know, to ensure that our ordinances are, are enforced. And I personally don't see a significant reason why we would approve a variance from that based on, you know, really poor planning on your end. So, that's my, you know, my position. Obviously, the, the board will have their own opinions. I don't, I'm not opposed to your elevations. But, the few times that we did look at deviations, like that car wash, they were very forthcoming right from the beginning. And we actually had them go back a couple of times. And we negotiated several times to get the proper amount of brick versus panel versus transparency glass. So, there was, there was give and take, right? There is a partnership there where they were working with us, and we were being flexible. But, that's not what you're doing. You came to us with something that met our ordinances. We approved. And then you're calling us, you know, here to say, "Hey, listen, we made a mistake, and now we want you to adjust it." And from my, from my position, I will probably be enforcing the ordinance. So, that's my recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski?
Have you considered any other alternatives to meet our original ordinance that you kind of agreed to back in May?
Well, we, we did agree to it in May, and we understand that was a submission. I'm not willing to conclude, though, that this does not meet your ordinance. Your ordinance says brick or better. And the fact is that this will last longer. It's aesthetically pleasing. It's much more expensive than brick. So, I agree it should have been presented in May. But, I don't think that this is anything different than what your ordinance permits. And likely, you would have given it a hard look in May if this had been in front of you. We understand procedurally what's going on here and where we missed boat. But, this meets the ordinance.
Well, I'm just going to point out, I mean, there's been other organizations that come before us with corporate looks, and then we've turned them down. So, I mean, I'm trying to find the silver lining here, and I just personally can't see it.
Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I've always been a strong supporter of the brick or better. And in my opinion, the brick is, is more durable and lasting than metal would be, especially on the, on the outer surface. So, that's my opinion.
Mr. Leonard?
As far as the brick or better, this goes back quite a ways. There wasn't really many products that were better than brick years ago. So, there was always a strong push to having a high percentage of brick. There was very little else that, that was available. But, that's evolved over the years. And I'm not opposed to alternative products. But, I'm, I'm looking at a, at a revised elevation, group of elevations here that looks different even than that. Right now, I'm not liking any of that that I'm seeing up there. And we have had other businesses come in with alternative products. But, it was always worked out and presented, like was mentioned about the car wash. Those things are negotiated back and forth, and there's a happy medium. I mean, when it was approved back in May, I think it was in May, it said brick on three sides. I mean, that's such a strong wording to what we're approving that I don't even understand how that even got submitted to begin with if there's a branding look that they're trying to achieve. That should have never been on, on a piece of paper that we were looking at. I'll be a little flexible with modifications. I don't like that. The one that was sent to us, it's a proposed elevation, has the, the siding on the two ends, the two corners. There's a lot of metal panels, though, on the sides, and then all in the front. I don't like that the siding goes all the way down to the, to the pavement. So, I'm not sure if this is all going to get resolved tonight because the drawings are just all over the place right now. But, I will be somewhat flexible because I do like the variety. I like the architectural variety that you get. To me, all brick is, in different colors, is no different than a subdivision that has all the same houses with different color siding. I don't really like that look. I, I was always okay with alternative products if they were durable. I just think this is a little overwhelming from where we started back in May. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
A couple of questions. Currently, there is a, there's a product about 3 feet up on the building. Is that, is that limestone?
It's not real limestone. It's a stone, man-made stone material.
Is it a natural product or is it a brick product?
It's a cement product.
It's a cement product?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the new drawings call for brick. They call for brick on there, and I guess we can consider that. Going back to what Mr. Leonard just, just mentioned just a moment ago, with your new, your new elevations that, that you've presented, one being the, the horizontal siding. What is the warranty with that horizontal siding?
It's a lifetime warranty.
Because when I looked it up on the internet today, that manufacturer, they were very specific about the warranties. It was a limited warranty of 15 years and a 30-year warranty. But, they, but, but they wouldn't warrant the color.
I, when I talked to him last week, I asked him that question, the warranty. That's what he told me.
Secondly, when it comes to the siding, back on May 16th, we had a, another proposed facility coming into Chesterfield Township. They're putting the, the siding on the, on the building. Actually, it was the, we discussed it just prior to your approval on May 16th. And we talked about that siding going all the way down to the ground. And we all agreed that we can't have that. We've got to have something on the ground just simply because of destruction, because of, you know, grocery carts, because of this, because of that. We wanted some kind of a masonry product in the bottom. You know, we're, we're, we are now, from what you're proposing, deviating from that. And lastly, the windows. So, what are you doing with the windows now?
Mr. LaBelle, to answer the last question, it is all, it is all cement product on, on the first floor. I mean, on the first floor, on the, from 3 and 1/2 feet down.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at a drawing. Can you go down a little bit? Right there, right there on the, on the, would be the north elevation, the horizontal boards. That isn't the cement board?
That's the cement nichia boards. It's a cement material, too.
I'm sorry?
It's also cement material, the nichia. That's a board, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's the, right, it's the hardy board, the nich, the nich board. That's exactly it. Unfortunately, I've got that product in my cottage, and water does wick. It does wick up that board. And again, you know, I'm concerned about it being damaged down below. And to be consistent with the other applicant who was just before you on May 16th, we asked him to do that as well, to put masonry up a certain, to a, to a certain elevation. But, we haven't gotten to that point anyway at this, at this moment. Anyways, back to the windows. So, what are you doing with the windows?
So, the, the new windows that are proposed are, they're just, they're fake windows, is what we're proposing. Just because you can't have it be transparent into the store.
Is it dark glass or is it just like a fake window with concrete behind it? Or, I guess that's what I'm asking.
He would know the material better than me.
He would know the material better than me.
It'd be a fake window with the concrete wall behind it.
Okay, so it's just like a window frame, but it's concrete behind it. So, you meet the specification for the ordinance required by the state?
Aesthetically, yes. Aesthetically, it looks like a window, but it's not a window. You want to be a little C N.
Right.
But it's still glass.
It's still glass, yes.
It's just going to be blanked out.
Yep.
Now, the, from what I understand, from what I remember, the last window, is that where the, the break room is at?
No, the break room would be in the far left of the east elevation.
Underneath the metal panels? In the metal panel areas where the break room is at? I'm trying to remember where, where it was at. Okay, that's my questions. Thank you.
The brick on the bottom, it runs all the way around the whole building, doesn't it?
Except for the, where that nichia fiber cement board is, that goes down to the bottom. Everything, yeah, otherwise, yeah. The back wall's black.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I'm okay with the driveway. I'm okay with the windows. The, so let me throw this out there. I don't know where the rest of the commission is at. What about just doing the metal three feet down from the top? I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing something out there.
It, it just won't match our look. Every single one of our stores looks exactly the same.
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
Like a border, like around it, I'm just throwing it out.
That won't really, it, it'll change the whole look of the store, it won't match any of our stores, not even close. That's the only issue we have at that. We, we have the product at our, like, like I said, 18 stores now, and no issues with the product. If, if, if one does get damaged, you could pop it out, pop another one in.
I don't think I have it on here. Mr. Morelli, you probably know it by the top of your head. How to, how tall is the, how tall is the building, sir? Like, these prints are-
Sixteen feet tall.
How, how tall, sir?
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet tall? Yeah, that was sort of like I was trying to, maybe try to come somewhat of a compromise, you know, bringing metal three feet down.
We, we could put stone, we could match that limestone where the nichia's going, so you have stone at the bottom. We can do that, and just wrap it all the way around.
On this elevation, this east elevation, what is the, from the, the height of the supposedly windows, which are just fake, from the, from the top of the window, Mr. Morelli, to the, the top of the building there, what's, how far is that, sir?
Can you give me that dimension, Jonathan, of the window?
He just yelled, told it to me. I can't see, it's too small.
Eight and a half, and it's about three and a half.
Yeah, from the top of the window to the, to the, let's say, the top of the building, not where the-
It's about four or five feet. Four to five feet.
Four to five feet.
A little bit higher in the ends, an extra foot or something.
Right, I see, I know where, I can see where the, where it changes elevations on the two points. You know, I understand where you guys are at, I'm just trying to see if we can work something out. And I understand, you know, with the originally take it, and then where the, where we see sign, and that was all supposed to be brick, too.
I think it had on the original, it did show metal or something, didn't it, Jonathan?
It was metal, yeah.
It said metal, I think.
It was metal up on top.
Yeah, it's metal on, so this, so this drawing.
Not the bottom column.
Yeah, but, but the columns on the original one were brick up to block or brick. Okay. And then to, basically where the window or the doorway begins.
This is the original one that was submitted, correct?
Yes.
So, that's where it threw me off.
That's, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, because if you see the bottom where the brick is, it says brick, and I seen the, the blank canvas, and I really just didn't look at it. That's how they, that's where the mistake came.
Just go full screen.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Mr. Leonard?
Can I just ask a question, or are you all?
No.
And I'm not sure what everybody else thinks, but here's kind of where my thought process is. I like the proposed elevations that we received in our packet from the township, with the, the, the cement product, the siding on the two ends. I wasn't, I didn't like the metal panels filling the whole center of the front elevation, but, or the east elevation, but now with the three windows there, it's going to break up that metal. That front, I think, would look good. I do want to see a stone belt line all the way around to get that siding up off the ground. I'm okay with the metal panels on the sides, but I, I don't like the, all the metal on the, on the, on the left side and in the middle. I like the, I like that look right there, but I, I want the, I would like to see the cement board off the ground. I'm okay with, like I said, we've, we've worked with other companies, we've negotiated. The, the thing that bothers me here is that we're negotiating something after the fact, but I think it would, it would work. I just don't like, there's just too much of the metal panels all across the front with the new one that just popped up there earlier. This one here, I'd be okay, but I want to see the brick all the way around. That's kind of where I'm at.
What do you think about making the columns stone all the way up? Instead of the, that was originally.
I, may, is it appropriate for me to speak, or do I wait for you to ask me?
I'm waiting.
Okay. Just, just, first of all, thank you for offering a compromise here, and I will say that we checked with HQ, and what you're proposing seems like something that will work, is that right, Mr. Toma?
There's, there's one, we talked about on the two ends with the-
You have the nichia on both sides?
Yeah, that, on both sides. But on the original drawing, on either side of that door, there was a, a stone column that went up above the door, and then the siding was above. I really do like that look, rather than just another belt line.
Would it be okay if we just took the stone, the three feet up? Would it be okay if we just took the stone to match what the belt that's going around?
For, up on the, the two columns?
Yeah, just leave the two columns, you know, well, right now, the nichia goes down to the ground. That's how we have it now.
So, if you, if you came up to above the, the door, the window that's showing there, and then you had the cement siding above it, and now I'm just one person, so I, what I'm talking about doesn't mean that anybody else is going to agree. I'm just throwing out some ideas, so that aesthetically it looks good, it's got durability, but we're not overwhelmed with metal panels either.
Sure, yeah.
I like, I like that look. The three windows are going to break up the, the metal panels in the, in the east elevation, so that won't look so bad on the sides. Not a big deal, I, as far as I'm concerned, with the metal.
Are there going to be brick on the top of the windows, Carl?
No. Metal? No, it'll just be, you mean in the center?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the metal, you know, just wrapping the windows. You don't have brick, a stone on the bottom, windows, and then the metal around it. Yeah, I mean, the columns on the one side work. On the right side, stone columns go above the door. On the other side, I'm not sure if it should be a belt line, or try to do the columns again and just fit, fill the siding in from there. But that's the general idea that I have as far as durability, looks. I almost wish that you weren't the first cannabis facility coming to us, and we're dealing with all this stuff, but it is what it is. And in the future, I think we're just going to be a lot stronger with something that we approve, that people walking out, the petitioner walking out, is not going to be confused that it's one thing versus another. But that's kind of where I'm at.
On the, on the left side of the building, at the one on gross spec, you have a, a circle drive all the way around there?
Yes.
And is that brown going to be on the side, or is it going to stop in the front?
The north or south side of the building? The north side-
South side.
South side? Right now, limestone wraps all the way around.
All the way around?
The three and a half foot stone, cement stone wraps all the way around.
But the hardy board is going to wrap all the way around there, too?
Um, it can't.
Or is it going to quit?
I mean, it can.
It's going to be the front and the side?
Either, either or, really.
I think the front and the sides, and then the metal panels.
As of a new drawing that was submitted today, it was supposed to be metal panels above that. But if the commission doesn't like that, then we got to do something different. Jonathan, can you show that the plan that was submitted to you earlier today?
The one I emailed you?
Yeah, this one here. See, it's actually metal panels, what they were asking for.
They're, they're black metal panels, they're not white.
Where the darker?
Yeah, so- No, where the darker panels are, they're on the left, the east elevation. Four and a half panels are.
See, I like the balance of having the siding on both sides of the center of that, which is what we were looking at prior to this drawing.
We can make that work.
There's a lot of back and forth right now, so I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, based on, you know, the opinions of everybody else. So, I'm going to step back, and anybody else that's got any comments?
Mr. Deming?
So, what Jonathan just told me is, I got to quit looking at this one, because when I'm looking at north elevation on this one, it's showing the front, and on this plan, the front's showing east elevation.
It's facing east, yeah.
So, I mean, that, I mean, it gets a little confusing when you're looking at prints, and like, say, I'm not an architect, so, you know, I'm trying to decipher all this. All right, I'll let you other guys go, I'm still trying to figure this out.
Mr. Brokhardt?
So, you got, you guys asked for three decisions tonight, the windows, the driveway, and the facing. I'm comfortable with two, but I am, I'm not comfortable without having a drawing in front of me that accurately depicts what is being settled. After everything we've been through on this, I think it's fair and reasonable that we have provided an actual drawing that shows what we're talking about. And you can point to it, but I, my eyes aren't strong enough to read the details, my eyes aren't strong enough to look at the, the notations and really understand it from this distance. So, I'd be willing to, and I don't like to tip my hand until all the discussion is done, but at this point, with everything that's transpired, I'm willing to, to talk and make a decision on the first two, but until I can actually look at the drawings, I'm not comfortable. And we have another meeting coming up, we have them very regularly. I think it's fair that you provide us the data we need to all be understanding exactly what you're asking for when it comes to this. I'm still a bit confused, I like the way it's going, and if it's actually documented in front of me, what I think I'm hearing, I think I'll be okay with, but I want to know what I'm hearing, and at this point, I don't. So, you asked for three decisions, I'm ready to give you two, and I'm tipping my hand, but that's where I stand. It's a special meeting, we've been at it a little while already. I want you to know where I'm at.
Anybody else?
I agree with Rich. Sorry. I agree with Rich. We've got too many elevations floating around here, so I think we need to come up with exactly what we'd like to see, if, if that's agreed upon, and I think we need to see it, because we're here because of all the missteps, and it's just, it's really not going down a good path with all these drawings swirling around and a lot of ideas. I think the ideas could work out for you guys, but we got to, I agree, we got to see it. I think everybody wants to see it.
And, and if it's going to cause you big financial hardship to wait a couple of weeks until we meet again, get it to us. Get it to us.
When's our next meeting, Jonathan?
November 21st.
Yeah, election day is 21st.
Yeah, 21st.
We don't have one on the 7th?
No. It's election day.
There's a lot of work that- There's a lot of work that they're doing on the inside, and, you know, it's, it's, it's October, but I, I really think to move forward, I, I'm not willing to sign off on anything until I see it at this point.
But everybody's okay with the metal on the sides? So, they could do that?
I don't know. I don't know.
We just want to see the front, or?
No, I want to see-
No, I, I mean, I personally think that they should go back. They know our, they know our wishes, and I think that they need to go back and put together their best. Their, what, what do they think is the best that is going to get the majority of our votes? I, I can tell you myself, I, I've already made it very clear from my position, what I feel, I think others are more flexible. I, I have a very difficult time being put in this situation when we shouldn't be. You know, at the end of the day, they had plenty of time to put their documentation in order. We're not holding them to any, any different expectation we would of anyone else. So, I, I just don't see why, why they can't do brick like they originally proposed. It's no different than putting a brick ledge on the concrete foundation, and they put brick on it. It's not a complicated task, and if they're putting the, the brick rains coating, it's the same difference. They got the brick ledge in the, in the footing and the foundation, and then they raised the brick up, so I'm not opposed to some metal on there, but I think they should go back and take consideration what everybody's giving feedback on, and come back with what they think is the, their, the best option they can do with the situation they have at hand. And, but I, I do believe that we have to have four new elevations. I think this back and forth, it's not fair to make a decision based on verbal. People need to see it. That's my thought.
Yep, I agree with Mr. Carr. Any other questions?
Mr. Miller, I got one. So, I guess what we're asking of Mr. Toma and Mr. Morelli is to give us another set of plans of some diagram, but, so where, where are we telling them to put stone, or where are we going to tell them we are liking to see the metal? I guess, because there've been so many ideas, I mean, I threw my ideas out from the front, Carl had some forever. I mean, I guess, before they go to their architect or whoever you guys use to draw something up, I mean.
We're not telling them what to do at all. I mean, they have to present to us what it is they want that's compliant with, with the ordinances and the expectations, so that we all know what the ask is. I don't have a big problem if they want to use the metal and, and keep the look, but I want to make sure I understand exactly what they're asking for, because the burden's on them to tell us what they need. And I've heard them loud and clear, and they've not said anything that's very objectionable to me, but I've seen a lot of different drawings, I've seen a lot of elevations, and I'm not sure all these things add up to one drawing that I can say, that looks good. I'm okay with it. And I know you're in the middle of construction, and I don't want this to cost you a ton of money, because I don't think what you're asking is unreasonable, except if you ask me to vote on something that I'm not 100% sure what I'm voting on. I won't do that. The other two, I understand.
We, we, we understand it's not the planning commission's job to draw, draw the building for us, and we've, we've heard the feedback. I've asked both these gentlemen, especially this tall guy, am I right, does he understand generally what the comments mean and what you're looking for? So, that's not our ask, that you take any more time on that, but our ask is that, it's, I know it's big for you guys to come here on a special meeting, but it's, it's tough to wait for that, one, it's been canceled now, so we may ask you to consider another special meeting, and I, I know it's heavy lift, but just so you know, that may be coming.
I just want to jump in, and we've dealt with Mr. Morelli a long time, and this is highly unusual, that he's standing before us, dealing with a, a situation like this. So, whatever happened, happened, and, and I agree that we're not supposed to tell you what we want to see specifically, but I'll go back to my vision. For balance on the front, I'd like to see the two ends.
Why don't we let them recap what we need? That was going to be my question, if they could recap everything we talked about, and then we can make corrections if we need to.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Leonard, for cutting you off. What, what I was gonna ask, first of all, I wanna make a comment. Mr. Morelli, you, uh, you provide a, a quality product for our township, sustainable, and, um, you care about our residents, and I wanna thank you for that. Please understand that I'm not attacking you in any way, but this is a bad situation. What I'd like you to do now, is, Mr. Morelli, is to take just a few moments and recap what we talked about, so that it's clear in your head and clear in our head, as where we're, and then we can make comment if you'd like us to, to make adjustments, so that when you go back and, um, you have your architect or your designer make changes, I don't want you to come back at a special meeting and say, well, this isn't what we were talking about. I wanna make sure that we're all in agreement with what, what you're talking about this evening. And, um, and I'm not opposed to a, a special meeting. I mean, I, I wanna do what's best for Chesterfield Township and my fellow neighbors. So I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you.
I, I guess my first question was, if, if the windows on the further building is what the commission would like to see, that we know we'd put those on there for a starting point? Are the windows, the windows for sure would be something that we, the commission would wanna see on there?
We would like to see the three windows on the front.
It does, it does.
Even if they're dummy windows. Cause from the road, it's gonna look nice.
If-
Just can't see in them, but I, I think aesthetically, it's gonna have a nice curb appeal.
We might adjust size of the windows a little bit to make sure it's proportionate, that was done very quickly, and, um-
Making them smaller, or?
Well, it's, 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 that is way more than twenty-five percent of windows also, to meet the ordinance. Just, I'm just-
I, I think within reason, as long as you're not, you know, three small little windows. If you need to shrink them with width and-
Well, look, well, look, look right.
Okay.
And then my other question is, yeah, we wanna come back to the next meeting and have it something that you guys like. Are you guys thinking the cement, the wood look fiber cement on both corners of the building? Like that rendering would show?
That's what I'd like to see, is that balance. And then in the middle would be the three windows with the metal panels. But to Rick's, uh, uh, comment early on about getting the, uh-
Hardy board off the ground?
Hardy board off the ground somehow. I'll leave it up to you, how you wanna do that.
I think you'd continue the, uh, the stone belt all the way around. The way to do that?
If you think it looks nice, you know, I'm not, not opposed.
I think I have a good idea of what the board's looking for.
So our, our look on the, uh, on the other end, where the, on the, uh, the south end of the, of the building, where the, the nichihai has now, we normally have black metal panels. Would you be okay if we put black nichihai there?
Well, they make black.
Yes, they don't?
That's on the sides?
It's just on the corner.
I don't think they make-
They might not make black. So I'm saying, normally, we have a nichihai by the door, white panels, and then black panels.
The whole side, the both sides, right now, you got the stone on the bottom. The whole wall that was gonna be brick originally, now is gonna be all metal panels, correct?
Yes.
Carl, look, he's gonna put this up here, cause I mean, I got a print.
I, I kinda like the, I kinda like the siding running the front and the side.
Yeah, that, that's how it's gonna be where the front door is and the windows on the side.
Right, and then you got the stone on the bottom, and then the whole rest of the sides can be the metal panels.
Yep, that, that'd be great.
And then the back, the back is just, uh, masonry stone, right?
It's block.
Block, okay. Personally, I, I think you can do something nice with the front and the two sides. Whatever you think's gonna look the best and appeal to everybody.
I think we can do that.
And then we get a chance to look at it, and then we're all looking at the same thing. One time, one sign off, and that's what we end up with.
That's fair, and I, I just wanna apologize. I, I take full responsibility for the, uh, original site plan submission. That was, uh, that was all me. That wasn't Dave.
Something else that we had talked about was the columns alongside the door. Are we gonna go with, uh, masonry all the way up?
You know, I think I'd leave that up to them.
We'll, we'll do whatever looks best, we'll do, we'll look at it both ways. We, we just would prefer it matched to other stores, but if we have to, we will.
Okay.
You're talking about this, but see on the other side, on the front, there's no door, so.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No, so, Mr. Morelli, I just wanna say, you know, I've worked with you for a lot of years. You do a great job, subdivisions, everything else, and I agree with my other members up here. This is somewhat of a little foobar.
Sorry about that, man.
We all know what that means and the nice words, so I think we can work at getting this better. Mr. Chairman or Mr. Secretary, do you think we should make a motion that we accept the change of the windows and the driveway for right now? So at least we've got that taken out of the way, that's up to you guys, I just-
Are you gonna be doing any?
You gonna be doing any site work with the driveway change, that it would need to be approved tonight?
Yeah, we're, we're starting the cement work already.
Yeah.
Then I, I think we're all okay with the, the two changes with the windows and with the, uh, the single, uh, entry. I am, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
We're gonna wait for the drawing on the windows, but as far as the site work, that one, no problem. We'll see the windows and, uh, the whole port, the three elevations, and I think we'll be good.
So, we have a-
You wanna do that, Rick?
Let me look, I, I wanna, I wanna refer to the drawing.
Okay. Okay. You want, here, you want this? I got the, I got the big stuff here.
Well, while they're looking at that, since we're looking at, since we're looking at approving that, uh, entry, I, I'm still curious to understand, what's the bust? Can you put the site plan back up, please? I'm just curious mostly for my edification.
Can I address?
You had two entries, uh, we know, one at the east, one at the west, and, um, but the drive, it's still the same. Drive coming in, um, so, I'm, what, what is the, uh-
Mr. Carr, I can address that for you.
Yeah.
The whole reason is because of the high water level in the retention pond. So retention pond, where it's at, has a certain high water level. And in order not to get the water to come back through the storm sewer system up into the parking lot, we had to raise the front parking lot substantially, like three feet. Cause it, cause the whole, cause the whole property drops from west to east like ten feet, the grade. So in order for the parking lot to flood, through the storms, to come up through the catch basins, we had to raise it up three feet. Now, the catch basins and the drive coming in go into a different system. They go into, we have an underground storm, a stormwater system that's in the berm along Grashet. Now, all that water goes into there, and then goes into, out to storm pipe in Grashet. And that's, so that's down low, the parking lot's raised up three, four feet above that. So you drive in here, the parking lot's up here, and that's why you just can't make that turn so fast. You had to bring it back to turn in, to get back up higher. It's all about the, the high water level in the pond.
Brian, hit your mic.
The building you're building, you, you raised that finish floor up as well? Along with that other building that's proposed, that'll have a higher elevation, all that.
We had a bunch of fill in that front parking lot to fill it up.
So the catch basins that are within the parking lot, you said that's all flowing to the east to an underground existing, uh, storm system?
The parking lot go into the, into the retention pond. Catch basins in the road, the drive coming in, go into an underground storage system in the berm along Grashet.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna thank the commission for coming out tonight, and, um, I've, I've solely worked in Chesterfield the last ten years, basically. I always loved working here, it's been great with all the different departments. Planning commission, the board, the building department. So I wanna continue to work here, and thanks for everything.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, um, with, with regard to the, um, the change in the entrance. If everybody is, and after I make the motion, if anybody wants to discuss it, you know, before we vote on it, um, we're okay with the flow, with the way the flow is gonna work now for the parking lot. I don't see any campers, I don't see anything going into that area, so it should be, uh, fire trucks, uh, things of that nature. No issues there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The, the drive, it is-
Thirty-four feet wide.
Yeah, okay.
So did you do a turning radius study for like, uh, garbage pickup? If I remember correctly, your garbage pickup was in, uh, you know, kinda like the northwest corner of that other building that's not built yet by the retention system. So have you done those turning radiuses? It's good before, you had a nice loop, right? Cause I remember talking about this. You had a nice loop where they just turned in, they went around the building, picked up, backed up, came back out, and the loop was really, uh, nice and clean. Did you do a turning radius study?
Yeah, they, they, they did that, and they moved the location of the dumpsters to make it easier.
So where's the new location of the dumpsters?
The one for the, the, the three thousand river building is on the corner of the pan there. You guys change my- Was that, was that, oh, you have the north?
Cause I remember that was part of our, our discussion back in May, that we had, we had adjusted it. I remember then too, I just wanted to-
The future, the future north, the future north building, it is, um, now, the dumpster, you enter it from east, driving west to get to it. So it's in the middle of the aisle, on the north side of that building, so very easy to get in and out. Are you pulling something up, Jonathan? You wanna see, I have it right here.
Okay, are we ready now to make that?
Sure.
Um, the last comment I'd like to make also is, when I make the motion, um, I'm gonna make it contingent upon our, um, our fire part, our fire department approving the new, uh, the new layout, make sure the fire trucks can get in and out of that, out of that parking lot.
That's been done, that's been done also.
So anyways, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, its drawing as part of my motion, and we'll let this included in my motion, that, um, it's sheet five on the, uh, on the site plan drawings, the elimination of one of the driveways and shifting the other driveway to the center of the parking lot due to, uh, elevation issues and stormwater runoff. Now, this, uh, this motion of approval is contingent upon our fire department having an opportunity to review the, uh, the new changes and make sure that they're okay with it as well.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Leonard. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We can do the windows?
We'll, we'll wait for windows.
Okay.
They can wait on windows.
Okay.
So you'll contact Jonathan when you want it?
We'll have this thing tomorrow.
Okay, because it took us about a week to get this one done, so.
We'll request it right away, and we'll get our guy in right away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Public comments? Sign in, state name for the record. Sign in, state name for the record.
Time in three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. I don't know how to do it on my phone. Thanks, Dave.
You want these other drawings back?
Uh, good evening, Mike Crainer, uh, Jack Grove Lane in Chesterfield. This won't take long, and I might leave a little bit of, uh, egg on my face, but if so, so be it. I do attend the township meetings regularly, so, um, and I, actually, I was downtown attending the SMART meeting this afternoon, so today's a meeting day for me. Uh, I'm a little confused, cause I was looking at the agenda, uh, previously, previous to the meeting. And it said we were talking about a RV storage area. I don't know if I was looking at something else, but I know the agenda said, well, today's agenda says RV storage. But I knew we're talking about cannabis, right? So I don't know, that's a little confusing to me right off the bat. It reminded me, I was at the township meeting when we opened up the door, and we were talking about the whole cannabis, uh, opportunity. And, uh, the big issue that came up, that maybe I overlooked, maybe I was looking at the wrong plan. There's two plans now, I understand that. But the one that I looked at and calculated says that there are eight hundred and seventy-six feet between the corner of the church and the corner of the store. So I mean, I mean, we can't do that, right? I mean, it has to be a thousand feet, so am I missing something there? I mean, you can tell me when we're done, but my calculation showed eight hundred and seventy-six. So I mean, if that's correct, then we're looking for big trouble. I mean, you can, you know, we can, uh, we can be fined, and, you know, our attorney can tell us all the repercussions. So if I'm missing something and end up, like I said, with a little bit of egg on my face, then so be it. But, um, am I misreading something here? I mean, has that been, uh, I mean, am I right or am I wrong? Do we know what the, uh, distance is between the church and the building? Well, and just another little footnote, a lot, I mean, this, I shouldn't interrupt my thought here, but we're talking about the, uh, the sheet metal that was, you know, and all the building material, which, you know, I don't understand too well. I'm used to going into a new store and opening it from the bottom. But I just suggest that maybe you guys can take another look at some of their existing facilities where they use this material, and then maybe you can see what it is that you're unsure about. So anyway, uh, my concern is just, uh, is this a thousand feet from the church? Thank you very much.
Do you have an answer for that, Mr. Palin?
Uh, this, the first question, um, the reason it's on the agenda, so this project, if you guys remember, was in front of you a couple of years ago for the RV storage. It came back in with the revised plan, adding the building. So in this, for the sake of consistency, how we always done it, we brought it back under the name of what the original application was. Um, and as far as the thousand feet, um, that's on the applicant. They provided drawings showing that buffer line and the location of the building. So it's from property line to building, and if you look at the site plan, you see the line on there of the thousand feet, which goes right to the corner of that building.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven eighteen. And motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Demain, call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.